We'll give it one or two more minutes here for people to join. And then we'll get the show on the road. I think we can probably start to do introductions. So first off, I am Darian Ziegler. Hi, I'm an architect at ResTark Design Studio and then I also was a Black Spectacles collaborator for about three years. I was a group tutoring coach in the original iteration of their group tutoring program. I also had the opportunity to help develop some of their workshops if you've ever had a Black Spectacle subscription and acted as a workshop instructor for the project management workshop from June of 2020 until November of 2022. And now I'm here. I'm also the chairperson of AIA Cincinnati's Early Professionals Committee. So if you're interested in getting involved in that, go to aiacincinnati.com, send Julie an email, she'll get you signed up. And I think I should be joined by Paul Shirley shortly, who's our co-host today and has a wealth of knowledge and experience to help contribute. We should have time to do a few quick introductions. So when I say your name, let me know if I am not pronouncing it correctly. I think I every I know how to pronounce Yazeed's name because I work with them and I think everyone else's name I should be good on, but just in case. And go ahead and explain where you're at in your testing and if there's anything in particular you want to learn today. We have a whole slideshow and presentation prepared, but we're really here to talk about whatever you guys want to talk about and focus on in the PPD exam to to help you on your testing journey. So first on my list, I have Tyler. Hi, Tyler.
Hey, how's it going?
Great.
I work at GBBN and I have completed the three tests up to this one, so about halfway through.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Hopefully gonna knock them out this summer.
That's the best thing to do is to schedule them. It's some people think that like if they study, they're going to schedule it when they feel prepared. And in my experience, it's always better to schedule it before you're prepared. So you have like a goal in the light at the end of the tunnel. Oh, welcome. Next up, I have Yazeed. Hi, Yazeed.
Hey, Darian. You hear me?
Yep. So where are you and your testing journey, Yazeed?
Yes, as you know, I just got to the S. I moved Slack six months ago. Starting like to prepare my papers and all the things to get me to the being licensed. Gavin is very helpful in this, so I just I didn't start it actually. I'm just like picking my toes in that in this. So we'll see about that.
Awesome. Thanks for joining, Yazeed.
You're welcome.
Next up, I have Justin.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Um, so I have taken four of the exams, this one and the PDD is the next one that I gotta finish up.
Welcome. You saved the two big ones for last?
Yeah, that's yeah, exactly what I did.
That's what I did too. And then I failed them back to back and then I had to retake them and it sucks.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I'm actually, I took both of them and they were a fail, so I gotta retake them. But I'm hoping to finish both of them back to back in August. So one is going to be the first week and the other one's going to be the last week.
Awesome. Well, second chimes the charm. Thanks for joining.
Thank you.
And then I have Amy Drake. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm Amy Drake. I'm just getting started on testing. I haven't taken any of them yet. Been doing this for a long time. I work for Phoenix Architecture, but just starting the tests.
Welcome.
Thanks.
All right. So a few things here, important references, and I will paste a copy of this presentation in the chat so you guys can click on these links and follow along as you like. I think the permissions are set so that everyone can view it. Hopefully you can't edit it. That would be an issue. But you can continue to use this as a resource if you'd like. So first off, just a few resources, making sure everyone has access to the NCAR guidelines. If you're someone who maybe started testing in the past, these used to be split into two documents, the AREE 5.0 guidelines and then the AREE 5.0 handbook. They combined this into one big giant document at this point, though. Make sure you're familiar with that. NCARB also has a lot of videos about really an introduction to the AREE, what's on each exam and how to sort of navigate and use the testing software. The NCARB AREE 5.0 community is also a great place to post questions, commiserate, anything you like. NCARB's demo exam, hopefully you're all familiar with those. NCARB did recently release a full demonstration exam for each division. And prior to this, there was a demo exam, but it was like an amalgamation of questions. Now there is one specific to each division and you can use it to practice. This is kind of an alternative to where in the past, the only way to maybe really have a true clone of the exam was to pay for a Black Spectacle subscription and use their practice exams. So the three demo exams from NCARB are a great new resource. AIA Cincinnati also has a number of resources that are available to be checked out. And we're working on purchasing more. So a lot of these right now are physical. We are talking about how maybe through AIA Ohio, we can get a Libby subscription to do digital lending. But for now, there are links to ones that are available free online. And then we had a certain amount of physical copies at the AIA office. If you're interested in borrowing, feel free to let us know via email or just reaching out on the website. There's a whole bunch of links here at the resources page and early professionals tab right here. So with that, let's get this going. NCARB updates. If you haven't heard, NCARB has done away with the rolling clock. And there is a new score validity policy. Under the new score validity policy, a past exam division would remain valid through the delivery of the exam version under which it was taken, as well as the next exam for version. For example, AREE 5.0 divisions will be valid through the delivery of the version of the exam under which they're taken and would also be used to establish appropriate credits under the next version, which would be AREE 6.0. This is really going to help give people more time and flexibility in getting licensed. And CARB has also reached a reciprocity agreement with the United Kingdom. So if you're a licensed architect in the UK or vice versa, you can get reciprocity. All right, so we've organized this into the different sections that NCARB has established for the PPD exam. We're going to do a general overview of the exam before going into talking about environmental conditions and context, then codes and regulations, then building systems, materials and assemblies, then the project integration of program and systems and finishing off with project cost and budgeting. Like I said, this is for you guys. So if there's anything in particular that you want to talk more about or learn more about, just let me know. Can't promise you I know all the answers, but if you ask me a question I don't know the answer to, I'll reach out to some people and try to get you a response over email after this workshop. So overview of project planning and design. This is basically the first page of the AREE guidelines introduction to PPD. There are 100 items total. Ninety-one of these are scored. The test duration is four hours and five minutes. This is the tied for the longest exam with PDD. And your total appointment duration is five hours. You have your optional break duration of 45 minutes. Because this test is so long, this really needs to play into your individual testing strategy. I'm someone who even before the new break policy did not take breaks when testing because I I found it broke my focus. But this being four hours long, you might want or need a break in that time. My advice is always if you do think you need a break, prepare for it and have a plan for how you're going to take it in advance. Know maybe you're going to take it two hours in. And remember, with the new break policy, you'll be locked out from any questions you have seen after you get back from your break. So if you are trying to possibly utilize any case study references throughout the duration of your exam, if you look at all those questions, take a break and then come back, you won't have access to them. You want to leave one of those unread, so you'll have access to it again. Is anyone unfamiliar with the new break policy? Or have any questions about the break policy during the ARES? Cool. Well, we'll talk a little bit more about that because in this exam particular, PPD and PDD, I think timing are super important. I know when I was testing, these are the two that I almost ran out of time on. I didn't have a lot of timing issues on the other exams, but because these are so long and there's so much content, I think they they can be really difficult from a time management perspective. So breakdown of PPD questions. You can see here, the bulk of your questions are really going to be in this project integration of program and system section. Second to that's going to be building systems, materials and assemblies, then codes and regulations. Project cost and budgeting is a relatively small portion of this exam as are environmental conditions and context. So if you're in a situation where you find you're running out of time to study, make sure you're focusing on project integration of program and systems first and foremost. Just based on a numbers game, project cost and budgeting is going to be less important to study. You're going to see less questions related to that topic. References. The other tricky part about PPD and PDD is there is so much content. There's too much content. I've just listed all the references that are in the back of the AREE 5.0 guidelines. And almost every single reference they have in the matrix is indicated that it might be a resource for the PDD exam, which is crazy because you you can't read all of these unless you you have a lot more time than I do. When it comes to PPD and PDD, this is where I really think it makes sense to start to use some sort of holistic study resource, like the PPI books, the Black Spectacle subscription, some of Young Architects' resources. It's just not very it's not going to be time efficient to try to read all of the primary resources for this exam. The guidelines do put stars next to ones that they think are really important, which is nice. But even then, Architectural Graphics Standards and Building Construction Illustrated are both massive books. It's going to be a serious time commitment to try to read them all. What I always suggest is use some sort of full-service study material or content aggregator and then go back to these primary resources as necessary if there's a topic that you're really struggling with. Otherwise, it can be really difficult to try to read every single reference listed for PPD. Do you like to tell everyone that there is a student version of Architectural Graphics Standards, which is really nicely condensed? If you've ever seen the full version in real life, it is huge. The student version is they parse it down a lot and it's really nicely organized. I do like it if you kind of want in a bridge version of this great resource. I think everyone here probably knows this already, but the building code is always free to view at iccsafe.com. Do want to make sure everyone is aware that the exams do use the 2018 version of the IBC. And this can get you in trouble sometimes because if you're like me, you might be used to going to codes and scrolling down to Ohio, which is currently based on the 2015 IBC. Make sure that you are looking at the current 2018 version when you're studying as much as possible. CSI Manual of Practice. Sometimes when people who are fresh out of school are studying for the PPD exam and they don't have experience during CA, they ask how they can buy the CSI manual or where they can buy it or where that is. Do not try to buy it. You just need to know the different specification divisions. I don't know what other information is in this personally, but the only content you're going to see on the exam related to it is really just those spec sections and the the different divisions and you can look those up online for free. So don't worry too much about that, guys. Some people get a little freaked out by it. Okay. So the AREE guidelines also indicate what resources you might get as a reference during your case studies. So for PPD, you could see ADA excerpts, I think diagrams that show ramps. Sometimes they show the little reach range, I think, that sort of thing, architectural drawings. These can be difficult to navigate in your case studies because they tend to be large files. Sometimes they can even take a little time to load on your exam. That happens to you. Don't panic, just wait. If you really can't get it to load and you're in the test center, that's when you raise your hand and tell them that your exam has an issue. I know when I tested, they they were a little glitchy and sometimes it took a while for the drawings to appear, but they did all eventually appear and I was able to answer the questions based on them. Just try your best to remain calm if you see any big architectural drawings. This is a time when it's good to practice with the demonstration exams because it isn't always natural how to navigate to view sort of big images and files in the the test software. So definitely want to make sure that you're practicing with the demonstration exams to get an idea of what that's going to look like. You might see code excerpts, you might see programming requirements and you might see zoning ordinances. Does anyone have any questions about the case studies? Cool. We will keep rocking and rolling. This is a public service announcement. Please do not forget that you can rotate drag and drop items. I have to be honest, I think I made it through two exams before I realized that you could rotate things. I think I I made it through PJM and PCM and then was taking PA. And that's when I first realized that you could rotate an object. In order to rotate an object when you're doing a drag and place problem, you just right-click and a gray box appears. You can click rotate, indicate the degrees and then apply, and that is how you get it to fit. It really is not intuitive, so make sure that you are aware you can rotate items on drag and drop questions. All right, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but time management is super important on PPD and PDD in particular, I think. My best advice for anyone test-taking is to make sure you're benchmarking your time. So if we're doing PPD as an example, there's 100 items on this exam to be answered in four hours and five minutes. That comes to 245 minutes total. When I was testing, I reserved a minimum of an hour to tackle the case studies. Maybe you need an hour and 30 minutes. It just depends on your individual test-taking style. I've always factored in 30 minutes per case study minimum. So these two case studies have 16 to 20 questions total. Let's call it an average of 18 case study questions. That leaves 82 normal questions to be answered in three hours and five minutes, which is an average of 2.25 questions and then an average of I wrote that backwards. It's an average of one question every 2.25 minutes. So if I'm testing right at 8:00 AM, I want to make benchmarks for myself to hit throughout the exam, reserving that one hour for case studies. So starting my case studies by about 11:00 AM and then working backwards from there to establish when I want to meet the halfway point of the normal exam, which would be about 9:30, hitting question number 42, 45 minutes in, I want to be at question 21. By two hours, 15 minutes in, I want to be at question 63, all to really work towards that goal of starting my case studies by 11:00 AM. Some people also prefer to start their case studies first. That's a great that's also a great test-taking strategy because it allows you to see those references in the case studies upfront, which might be helpful. Either way can work as long as you have a plan and you stick to that plan. Once you get into the test take test-taking center or once you start your online proctored exam. My other advice is to try to stick to two minutes per question and don't be afraid to immediately move on from a question you just don't know. The worst thing you can do is spend five to 10 minutes trying to work through a calculation and still not be confident that you have the calculation correct. And on this exam in particular, there's not a ton of calculations like there are in the PCM exam. If you come to one and you don't think you're going to be able to get to the correct answer, pick an answer, never hurts to guess and move on. The questions aren't weighted at all. They are all worth the same amount. Game the system, focus on the questions that you know or think you can get right. Do not let the ones that stump you, slow you down, guess, flag it for review, move on. Okay, so now we are going to go into a description of the individual sections and then a few practice questions. Practice questions based around those individual sections. These practice questions are from the original iteration of the AREE 5.0 handbook. If you did start testing a few years ago, the original AREE 5.0 handbook had practice questions, answers, and then the rationale behind that answer included in them. So we've dug that information back up and represented it here so we can tackle some of these practice questions. I might call on you guys to give what answer you think is right. Don't worry if you're wrong. We're all learning and I definitely got some of these wrong when I was putting the slideshow together. And then we'll go over what NCARB says is the correct answer and the rationale that they've given behind that. So the the first section is environmental and contextual conditions. There's three different objectives in this section. The first objective is determine location of building and site improvements based on site analysis. This really calls back to a lot of the subjects and questions that you probably saw in the programming and analysis exam if you've taken that one. That one's kind of famous for here's a site plan. Where do you want to put your building? You might see some of that on this exam as well. The next objective determines sustainable principles to apply to design. And this is an area that I know I'm not great at and I struggled with. The next objective is determine impact of neighborhood context on the project design. All right, so our first sample question in this section. A preliminary drainage analysis for a small land parcel in a cold, wet location indicates a slope of 1% or less. The land parcel is intended to be developed into a suburban shopping center. Which types of stormwater management systems should the architect recommend? Recommend. Check the three that apply. So I want to do a quick review of the tools you'll have in the exam software. You will have an underline and or not an underline, but rather a highlight and a strike-through tool. Something I struggle with is rushing through questions and missing pertinent pieces of information. Really suggests that you all practice utilizing those tools, especially on these long exams where you can get fatigue and start to breathe them less carefully just by nature of testing for four hours straight. So if I were you guys, I would probably highlight the word three. I would maybe highlight small land parcel in a cold, wet location. Maybe highlight the slope. Those all seem like things that might play into our answer here. Just from a test-taking convention, it's always best to read through all of the options before you start to make any determinations, even if there's one that calls to you immediately that you know is correct. So our options here, an underground cistern fed from rainwater collection on the shopping center roof. Next, porous asphalt in the parking lot. Then foundation drainage around the building perimeter. Next, a constructed stormwater wetland planted with native vegetation. Then onsite gray rotter treatment. And then diversion ditches between adjacent rows of parking spaces. It's always best and can be a good strategy for these check-all that apply questions to start with a process of elimination. Instead of going straight towards which one you know is correct, eliminating a few first can help illuminate the answer. So let's see, Tyler, you're first on my list. Are there any of these that you think are incorrect? Any you think we should cross out right away?
Vegetation?
Yeah. I agree. What do wetlands have to do with anything?
It's not cool. Wrong environment.
Yeah. So maybe we go ahead and I don't think I have a way to do this. Oh, I do. Oh, man, guys, Zoom has improved a lot. Maybe I can cross that guy out right away. And let's see, Yazeed, you're next on my list. Are there any others you think are incorrect that we can cross out immediately?
I guess divisions, ditches between adjacent rows of parking space since it's a wetland, it's gonna be like hard to, maybe it's gonna be very costly to do some ditches. I don't know.
Maybe, maybe. I think let's put a question mark by this one. Justin, what are your thoughts?
Excuse me.
You can have no thoughts too. That's okay.
Well, I'm trying to figure out if there's actually a porous asphalt. That one's kind of the one that's kind of striking me to strike out, but.
Does this exist?
You're right.
All right. And then Amy, what are your thoughts? Any you want to cross out?
I think I'd cross out onsite gray water treatment. My only thought is we're not treating the water. We're just trying to manage it.
Exactly. I think that one's a good one. And then you guys want to jump into what the the answer actually is now? Because this was a really hard question and I completely got it wrong the first time I did it. So, oh, how do I? There we go. Back to the mouse. Oh, no. Well, that's kind of annoying. There we go. So what NCARB says is the correct answer is one, an underground cistern fed from rainwater collection on the shopping center roof, a porous asphalt in the parking lot. Turns out it does exist. I've never seen a porous asphalt, I don't think, but I don't tend to read into specifications for asphalt very often. And then diversion ditches between adjacent rows of parking spaces. And their rationale behind this is they're they're going back and referencing strategies that were discussed in the Architectural Graphics Standards. Again, Architectural Graphics Standards is like a 500-page book, I think, and they've pulled this information throughout various sections of it. This is a great time to to remember that using a primary study resource that aggregates data from all those references can be helpful. Runoff from impervious surfaces such as roofs or paving can cause erosion and flooding. The underground cistern will instead capture the rainwater and porous paving will allow the water to seep back into the soil. Diversion ditches will collect any additional runoff from the parking area and divert it away from the built areas. Foundation drainage and gray water treatment options are not related to stormwater management and a constructed wetland is not appropriate for a small commercial site in the cold climate. So the way you can start to eliminate these, it's it's telling you and throwing options out here that don't actually relate to stormwater management. And it's thinking that's how you're going to know what a a true option is. Let me get my little pen back if I can. Oh, no. What if I don't know how to use Zoom correctly, guys? Come on. Oh, well, so what it's saying is foundation drainage isn't related to stormwater management. You want to manage the water before it gets there. So that's why they're crossing this option off. Constructed stormwater wetland planted with vegetation. They're saying that just would not be appropriate, given that it's a small land parcel in a cold, wet location. And then onsite gray water treatment, again, just like Amy said, they're saying this option Um, and then onsite gray water treatment, again, uh, just like Amy said, they're saying this option doesn't apply. Because, uh, we're just talking about stormwater management and this isn't a part of stormwater management. That's a. Process for, uh, making gray water potable or not potable, but more usable rather. So. If we can use that process of elimination, maybe we could have checked these even though we weren't sure porous asphalt was a real thing or not. Um, and that's how that process of elimination can be really helpful as you're going through these questions. Uh, and then sometimes it just doesn't work too, because I absolutely got this wrong when I was trying to do it by myself before now. Did anyone have any questions about, uh, this sample item? Moving right along to our next sample item. Sample item number two. A new one-story daycare center is being planned in a hilly suburban location in a hot humid climate. Uh, the prevailing winds are from the south and the client wants to use passive cooling. Which of the following strategies should the architect recommend? Check the three that apply. So again, we have choose all and we need to click three. Um, our options on this question, the building should be located at the top of the slope. The building should be elongated along the north-south axis. The playground should be located to the north of the building. The building's main corridor should include operable transoms above the door. Uh, the building should include large openings in the north and south sides and the line of shrubs should be planted west of the playground. Okay, so let's see, let's review some of our important words here. So it's a one-story daycare, it's hilly, it's hot humid and the prevailing winds are from the south. Um, so our goal is to use passive cooling. Which of these strategies would the architect recommend to allow passive cooling to happen? Uh, let's see, I'll just ask for volunteers instead of picking on you by name. Does anyone feel one way or another? Do you see an option you think we can cross out immediately? Or do you see one that you think is good to consider as a correct option?
I think get rid of the line of shrubs west of the playground.
Line of shrubs west of the playground. Oh. Tyler, how'd you do that?
There's a line tool.
Uh, if you hover over draw, then you can see the line tool. Oh man, thank you Tyler.
I think the playground should be eliminated too.
The playground should be eliminated. Why is that?
I don't see how a playground really has anything to do with the question.
Perfect. Okay. Any other thoughts? Is there one more we can eliminate? Or maybe there's some that we start to think are correct now?
North and south probably needs to be eliminated.
I agree, because if we elongate it along the south axis, that's just more opportunities for sunlight to come in. And now we have three left. Uh, so our remaining, the building should be located at the top of the slope. That makes sense. That way, uh, you can utilize some of that wind, I imagine. Uh, the building's main corridor should include operable transoms above the door. Those are always nice and the building should have large openings on the north and south sides. Alright, let's check on the next slide to see what answers they give. And perfect, so all of these strategies are discussed in sun, wind and light. Um, sun, wind and light is nice and really helpful. Uh, for some reason, I've always struggled with the, the sustainability. Uh, questions, I don't know why, I think I overthink them and I ended up reading through some of some winds in light prior to my exam, which was helpful. Uh, buildings in a hot humid climate should be located at the top of the slope to catch cooling breezes. Large openings on the north and south sides and operable transoms in the corridor will allow for cross ventilation. A north-south axis would actually limit opportunities for cross ventilation exposed the building to hot afternoon sun. Placing the playground north of the building would provide limited shading, but would block the cooling breezes from reaching the playground. Planting shrubs west of the playground may provide visual interest, but will not be effective in blocking the hot afternoon sun. Um. And I think this one is really typical of one that you'll see on the exam. You start to see a lot of questions like this on programming and analysis as well. Anyone have any questions or additional thoughts on this question? Moving right along. To codes and regulations. So this is the next section of the PPD exam. There's three objectives here, uh, apply zoning and environmental regulations to the site and building design. If you recall back to the start of the presentation, we talked about different, um. Uh, materials that might be available for you as a reference during the case studies and they mentioned zoning documents might be one. Uh, that really relates back to the subjective. Objective two point two, apply building codes to the building design. Uh, one of the other references that you might see on your case studies is the IVC. That's what plays into the subjective. Also, when you're going through your exam, uh, it's always a good idea if you come upon a question. That you think might relate to a reference. Let's say you come across a question and you're like, oh, I know the answers that's in the ADA. Or in the IVC, uh, but I can't remember the answer. Maybe it's a good idea to track those, make a little mark on your whiteboard of what the question is and what reference you think would give you the information. You need to answer it. Because there's always a chance that once you get to the case studies, you'll get that document and maybe then you can go back to that question. And get the correct answer. If you encounter a situation like that, you know, guess, mark it for review, maybe write it down on your whiteboard, move on. And if you have time, go back and see if you can answer it once you've reviewed those reference documents, um, as you go through the case studies. Or maybe you started with your case studies and you already know, um, that's always a great option too. And then objective two point three, integrate multiple codes into a project design. Um, this is something that might come up, especially when you're talking about, um. Going into, let's see. Let's pull up Ohio just for reference. And the kind of topics they are talking about there, um. I think really relates into probably some of the codes, uh, summaries that you've done or read at work already. So relating chapter five allowable building areas and heights to chapter six. Those different types of construction and what the ratings need to be. Uh, and probably even relating back to chapter three, use and occupancy classification. How an A use relates to the construction type, which relates to the general building heights and areas. Um. This area is where you wanna make sure that you're using your, uh, adept in practice that using your search tool. When you get to case studies and you might have multiple code sections all at once. I think the codes and regulations section of PPD. Uh, these are the questions that a lot of times can end up in those case studies. Alright, does anyone have any questions about the, uh, the code and regulation topics? That they wanna discuss before we jump into some of these questions? Sweet. Sample item number one. An office building is being proposed for a rectangular suburban office park site measuring three hundred feet by six hundred feet. This might be a good time to start drawing on your whiteboard. The program requires an uncovered grade level entrance plaza of three thirty thousand square feet. A hundred twenty thousand square foot below grade parking garage plus a four hundred fifty thousand gross square foot. Feet of office space setbacks must be free of the built site improvements. What is the minimum total number of parking and office levels needed if the city requires a twenty foot setback on all sides? And I hate this question because it's really hard to visualize. And I will not make you guys, um, answer any math questions out loud. Unless you want to, um, I know from my time hosting for Black Spectacles, that's the one time nobody ever wanted to be called on when they had to say math out loud. Does anyone actually wanna take a stab at this before we just start talking through the rationale here? Okay. To be honest, this question is really hard to do at a workshop study session. So the first thing you have to do is calculate the buildable areas. Uh, the below grade buildable area equals the surface area of the site reduced by the required setbacks. That's step one. So they're taking five sixty times two hundred sixty feet. We go. Back to the question, the original site was three hundred by six hundred, but there's a twenty foot setback on all side. So three hundred minus forty and six hundred minus forty, you get five sixty by two sixty to achieve. The total area of the site, which is. And maybe we'll just start to sketch this out. Which is one hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred square feet. So. We've got. Two sixty. Five, five, sixty. Total buildable area, one, four, five. Six, zero. And this is probably the process that you wanna do on your whiteboard. Okay, first. Then we'll calculate. Oh, okay. So that was step one, the above grade buildable area equals the below grade area reduced by the required plaza. So the required plaza was thirty thousand. So we can subtract that. To get. A hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred square feet. Step two, next, um. They'll calculate the number of levels required to accommodate the office space. This can be found by dividing the total office area. By the above grade buildable area. So going back to our question here. They are requiring us to have. Four hundred and fifty thousand gross square feet of office space. So we take our remaining area. That one, one, five, six hundred. And we divide four hundred and fifty thousand square feet by it to get three point nine levels. Okay, and then we will calculate the number of levels required to accommodate the parking garage, which is found by dividing the total parking area. By the below grade buildable area. Uh, remember that all partial levels should be rounded up to the nearest whole number. The above and below grade levels together equals the total answer. So if we go back to our question here. We have a hundred and twenty thousand square foot below grade parking. So going back, we can take not just the twenty foot setback. But the actual full footprint. And, um, we can divide the required amounts. Of parking by that number, which is point eight levels. So we've got four levels above grade office and we have one level of parking that's below grade required. Uh, add those up to get five total levels. Uh, and now I'm going to tell you that this question took way too much work and if I saw this on the exam, I might flag it for review and skip it altogether. Because the most important thing is to track your time, exceed where you can, excel with questions that you feel comfortable you can get the answer on. And if maybe you saw this and you read through it and you're like, that doesn't make sense. Uh, what might work best from a time management situation is just to flag it. Move on, come back to it when you have time, maybe on your whiteboard, you write a little description. Uh, this is a question that had a lot of calculations. It might be a time suck. Did anyone have any questions about the, the process we went through here?
No, but it's good to visualize and, and then, you know, do what you did and you can have that opportunity on the marker, mark board. To, uh, draw out the rectangles or any kind of shape that you guys wanna need, use.
Yeah. Uh, the whiteboard has been a very unpopular introduction, um, from what I understand. I, I was able to use the, the actual scratch paper when I did it. Uh, but one thing that is nice about the whiteboard is you can have unlimited sheets. So you could even have a sheet just for this question. And it will let you draw perfect triangles. There's a text tool that you can use. Um, and they have updated the calculator so that you can copy and paste values from it to the whiteboard. Uh, and I think that is the one area where I'm, I'm like, wow, that's really helpful. Because now you can copy from the calculator to the whiteboard, keep it and you don't have to worry about mistyping anything. Um, that is an advantage of the whiteboard over the pen and paper, I think, or the scratch paper. Because you had to write up the number, then remember to type it correctly. Uh, and if you mistype something, you, you probably get the question wrong. Cool, and then looks like Paul just joined. Welcome, Paul.
Hello, sorry, I am late.
No worries.
I made it.
So Paul is a senior architect at PMBA Studio and the, um. Owner of Pelican Studio and he, uh, is here to, to help support in any way. He has a ton of experience and is super knowledgeable.
I had to go through this exam myself. I mean, not this one, but. Arie. Three is when I went through it, but. I was on the. And carve board. When they were developing. The new. And carve and then the, uh. Questions committee or. And cards, uh. For, for N carbs, ARI four point O.
So. Thanks for joining, Paul. We're happy to have you here. Onto our next sample item. Uh, the IVC contains requirements for the ventilation of attics and concealed roof spaces for which of the following reasons. And, uh, again, this is something that I struggle with right now at my actual job. Uh. So our options, to prevent heat transfer from the building into the spaces. To prevent moisture accumulation and condensation in the spaces. To eliminate the need for installation of an air barrier in the spaces and to exhaust fire or smoke from the spaces. Does anyone see an option that they wanna cross off right now?
The eliminate the, um. Air barrier, that one.
Yeah, I agree. I think we still.
Do they exhaust fire or smoke?
Yeah. Ventilation is not a smoke exhaust or evac system. So I think those are good options and now we have two. So let's say like we looked at this and we had no idea what the real answer was. Just by eliminating one, two, that we knew we, um, that we knew weren't correct. We've taken our chances of guessing and getting it correct from a one and four twenty-five percent down to a one and two. So we have a fifty percent chance of getting this right. By guessing, just because we've eliminated at least, uh, two of the options. And Tyler's crossing that one out to leave. To present moisture accumulation and condensation spaces. Which sounds perfect to me because that is the correct answer. And the rationale given, um, as shown in Building Codes Illustrated, a guide to understanding the twenty twelve International Building Code. When a building materials are enclosed on both the exterior and interior side of the space, the concealed space, whether an attic or raptor space. Becomes sus- susceptible to moisture intrusion. Ventilation paths allow moist air to be exhausted from the concealed space. The other options, while important to consider when designing a building, are not relevant to this code requirement. Um, and this is something a lot of times that actually gets caught in QA QC's where people design or detail enclosed spaces. And omit the vents because it's not always the front of what you're thinking about when you're drawing that section. Okay, any questions before we move on to the next section of the exam? Alright, onto site analysis and programming. So we've got four objectives in this section. Objective three point one, determining mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. Uh, objective three point two, determining structural systems. Objective three point three, determine special systems such as acoustics, communications, lighting, security, conveying and fire suppression. And objective three point four, determine materials and assemblies to meet programmatic, budgetary and regulatory requirements. Uh, I think this is an area that's really challenging for people fresh out of school sometimes. I think myself included when I was testing and I didn't have quite as much experience. Um, this is an area really where I really struggled and had to spend a lot of my time studying. Um, I think these are areas where if you are a seasoned professional who's going back into the testing game. This might be an area where, where you excel just based on your prior experience. So with that. Our first sample item, so this is an example of a drag and drop question, um. Remember, a lot of times when you have these, not all items will be used. If you are encountering a question that has the, the sort of programs that you need to lay out in a, in a building or on a site. Uh, a lot of times you will need to use all of those individual drag and drop items. Uh, but on ones that look like this where you have words. Uh, but on ones that look like this, where you have words kind of, I think it's less common that you need to use them all and the question will prompt you for that. So, question here. A client for a new mid-rise office building desires a mechanical system that will have minimal operating cost and maintenance. Allow fle- maximum flexibility for office-based layout and provide individual control over the interior temperature. Drag the labels and symbols from the area on the left onto the schematic layout of the system below. Not all items will be used. Okay, and let's see what we have here. We have a chimney, we have a cooling tower, we have boilers, chilled water plant, a fan room, a teak pump, a VAV terminal and a VAV terminal with a thermostat. Okay. So. Let's see, what's a good way to involve everyone in this? Let's go ahead and start with the top word, boilers. Does anyone have any feeling about where the boilers should go?
You need the chimney for a boiler?
Yes. Yes, you do, so maybe we use that when we put boilers right here. Oh no. Sorry guys, hope you didn't see that. Okay, next one, chilled water plants. Using that same logic.
Yes, with the cooling tower.
Okay, so we know our chilled water plant goes with the cooling tower, perfect. Next one, fan room. What do people think about the fan room?
Yeah, right in a box. Circulates there.
All right. So next we have heat pumps, VAV terminals and VAV terminal with thermostat. Heat pumps, how do people feel about heat pumps?
Hmm, I don't think that's a, that's not a heat pump system.
Agree, so maybe we skip to the next one, a VAV terminal. Uh, but we also have VAV terminals with the thermostat. Why do we have two of them? How do people feel about that?
It says individual control over the interior temperature.
Awesome, so maybe.
You would need to have, yeah, thermostats.
Okay, and where should we place our VAV terminals with thermostats?
They go before the uh, supply ducts. Be, yeah, be, yeah, like they're like. Yeah.
Awesome, so we, we obviously don't need them at the returns. Okay, I think we're covered. So anyone have any other thoughts or opinions before we flip to the answer? All right, so what we've drawn is out of alignment, but it does match what they have here. They didn't use the heat pumps or the VAV terminals. They've placed the VAV with thermostats here at our supply before it distributes to the spaces. Um, boiler goes with chimney, the cooling tower goes with the chilled water plant. The fan room uh, happens and distributes that conditioned air. We don't need any VAVs at the return ducts, that's where our air returns back into the system. Uh, here's our exhaust and our fresh air. One thing I do want to point out, you can see these green lines around the area. Um. The way that N-Carb uh, codes or sets these questions up, there's always an area where you drag it, that's correct. Um, you'll never see the area itself, um, but it's kind of how they demonstrate here with this green line. As long as you get the piece in that green box, uh, it'll flag as correct. And there's, um, I, I suspect that the actual area they use for this is a little bit wider too. Don't get too caught up in whether or not you think you're in the box, just place it where you think's best. Try not to worry too much about the imaginary box that's going to flag it as correct or not. Again, um, that worry and spending time worrying on it is what's going to hurt you, not so much the point you'll miss if you do happen to have it slightly outside of the box. Uh, so our rationale here, the single duct VAV system, as described in the Architect's Studio Companion, meets all of the client's requirements. The fan room's the central hub of the system, conditioning the fresh air before distributing it through the building. Cooling is provided by the chilled water plant, which requires a cooling tower. Heating is provided by the boilers which exhaust through the chimney. Finally, each conditioned space requires a VAV terminal with a thermostat, providing both flexibility and temperature control within the individual spaces. Any questions here?
Just a comment that, um, so this is typically a lot what we do for interior renovations for commercial and stuff like that. Um, which is really, oh, good, great, I love to have this question, but um, the last time I took the, this exam, you know, they put them whammies in there and say, hey, what about if you have a solar roof or something or water cistern system, so you just.
Geothermal?
Yeah, you just need to know about the sustainability parts, if you add that to um, into this sort of pro- prob- problem, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think that's one of the things that's really hard about the exam is they, I think it does tend to focus towards sustainability and emerging systems, because it, it wants to be forward-thinking, but it's hard because a lot of architecture uh, that you practice or do in the day-to-day doesn't get into that at all. Um. Sunwind and Light Handbook is helpful. Um, and doing a refresher course on those systems that you don't see every day. I know ninety-nine percent of what I do has to RTU on the roof and they'd ever ask you questions about that, which is annoying.
Exactly.
Uh, Paul, did you have any advice for these um, systems integration type questions?
I, I found the original Kaplan Materials to be useful. The books that are um, broken up into specific divisions. So, back in the day, um, the exam was broken down into uh, structures and then mechanical, electrical plumbing systems and construction docks. And so you would read through the books about the construction docks. You'd read through the books that were the construction docks, you'd read through the books that were about structures and you'd read through the books that were about mechanical, electrical plumbing systems. And to me, that was the biggest help for getting kind of this overall rounded experience. Um. I, I will say, even as an experienced, um, seasoned professional, mechanical, electrical plumbing is never my strong suit. That's why we have consultants. And um, I think sometimes the exam kind of covers things in a way that my consultant would know that, why should I have to know that? Um, but to, to remember that this um, exam is all about health, safety, well, welfare of the entire building and the architect has to kind of oversee the mechanical, the structural, the civil. Um, and so that's the relevance that you, as the individual responsible for the entire project need to know um, about these systems and make sure that they're in place and that your consultants are, are doing them properly. So that's the reason this stuff is kind of um, on the exam.
Absolutely. Uh, and I know when I was studying, sometimes if I ran across a concept I didn't understand, I would ask one of my consultants and I'd be like, hey, can, can you tell me how this chilled water plant works? Uh, cause I, I don't know. Uh, and if you ask your consultants, you actually work with theoretical questions that you don't know about, they will be so excited to answer you. Um. They will be honored that you've asked them and they finally get to tell someone about something and it's not just like you asking them why they haven't turned in their drawings yet. They want to tell you. Cool. All right, let's move on to everybody's next favorite kind of question. So referred to the exhibit, at the cross-section shown indicates interior column and the tributary areas for loading on the column equals twenty feet uh, by twenty-four feet. Which of the following is the design live load for the building? Assume no live load reductions. All right, so first we probably need to understand the tributary area. So we've got twenty feet by twenty-four feet, that's almost square. And then we've got our column in the middle. So twenty-four feet by twenty foot, here's a column, this is our tributary area. And then we've got our roof load. Let's double check our question again. Which of the following is the design live load? Assume no live load reductions. Okay. So when we look at this, we can see that we have live and dead, but they are only asking us about the live load. So let's just cross that completely out so we can't see it. We don't want to see it, we don't want to get confused and grab it. Uh, unfortunately, you won't be able to draw on the actual exam to physically um, cross out exhibits like this. You can't use the strike-through tool on a, an exhibit that's like an image. Um, so you'll just have to do that in your head. Uh, and then we need to understand what our loads are. So we've got thirty on the roof. We've got sixty at the third floor. And then we've got sixty at the next floor. Let's add those together, sixty plus sixty is a hundred twenty, plus thirty is one fifty. So we've got a hundred and fifty PSF. And then we need to figure out what our area is. So this is our total live load. The tributary area is twenty-four times twenty. Oh. So let's do. I don't know. How is the calculator frozen in my computer? That's concerning. Anyone want to tell me what twenty, oh, there we go. Twenty-four times twenty, or I probably could have figured that out in my head, but huh, never hurts to double check. So we've got four hundred eighty square feet for our tributary area. Um, so to get the total live load, we take that tributary area times our live load, which is pounds per square foot. We're taking the per square foot times total area to get the total amount that's acting on this column. So four eighty times one fifty, this one I do definitely need a calculator for. Unless someone's already calculated it, wants to shout out the answer. Nope, okay.
It's seventy-two, seventy-two thousand, yeah.
Awesome. So does anyone disagree, have feelings about that? Okay, that's great, because that's definitely the right answer. And let's erase some of this. So just like we walked through, first you need to calculate the tributary area. Uh, then you add up the live loads actually on the column. You multiply that by the tributary area to get you the design live load for the footing. Does everyone feel good about that question?
This is actually one of the softball structural questions.
I know, um. Anytime I see uh, like a practice question that has the word moment in it, I, I immediately uh, guess and move on, because I know I'm not going to get it correct.
Yeah.
But this one, I think, is, is a doable one, um. And hopefully you all see this type of question on the exam and not a scary moment one.
All moments.
Oh. All right, cool. Let's go ahead and go on to the next one. Oh, we've got another fun diagram. Uh, this one's classic. Uh. This is a little bit off topic, but has, has everyone seen the old AIA presentation called the Five Walls of the IBC?
No.
Okay. I am going to post it in here right now. Because I think it's really important. Uh, so it's an old uh. And I'm sure like there's an actual um, link to it on ICC save, there we go, that's probably better. Hmm, never mind. Uh, so it's an old PDF presentation that was, um, I think like some sort of lunch and learn that the International Code Council did at some point. And this is one of the most helpful PDF presentations ever, especially if you're just starting out and learning the difference between firewall's barriers, partitions, smoke barriers or partitions. Uh, this is something I usually send to, to my co-ops and my interns. Um, because when they start out not having read the IBC typically, um, they don't understand that when I say firewall, fire barrier or fire partition, I mean different things. And this is the clearest way I've ever seen it put for anyone. This is something that um, one of my mentors passed on to me when I was a co-op way back in the day. Not way back in the day, a little bit in the day. Um, and it, it's just a really great presentation about the different types and how they relate to code requirements. Some of these ratings, I think, might have changed since this was done, because it, this presentation's from twenty sixteen. Uh, but the information still holds true and it's presented in a really understandable way. So that was a bit out there, but this question relates back to that uh, a ton. So, the partial schematic design plan for a new reception and conference area is shown below. Along with the wall types to be used in the project. Specific requirements include conference rooms that must include acoustical separation from each other and surrounding spaces. Uh, the storage canopy room must include the coffee machine and the space for office supplies. Drag the tag numbers from the area on the left onto the gray wall tags on the partial floor plan to indicate which wall type is required at each location. Not all tag numbers will be used. Again, I think this is really typical of the, the type of question you might see on the PPD exam. Um, one of these, you're probably going to encounter a drag and drop that looks a lot like this. Okay, so let's do a review of what wall types we have. First, we have a partial height wall. Next, we have a wall that is going up to the ceiling. Um, so this one probably doesn't carry a rating. This one is extending past the ceiling, it might carry a rating. There are assemblies that do that, if the ceiling is rated too, but maybe, um, it's providing no acoustical separation between these two spaces and oh god. Come on Zoom. It isn't providing any acoustical separation between these two spaces. This one can definitely be a rated assembly, it's fully cornering off the two spaces and providing full acoustical separation. We do know that the conference rooms must include acoustical separation. Um, so I think let's start with wall number one. Does anyone see an area that would have a partial height wall? Do you want to draw number one in that spot? Nice, thanks Tyler. Any other spaces? I don't think so. Wall number two, that's a weird wall. Does anyone think we should use wall number two somewhere?
No.
Let's cross that guy out, he's strange. Well, number three, so it's a full height wall, but there, um, it's not extending to the deck. Uh, different systems can go over top of it and it isn't uh, acoustically separated. Does anyone think we should use wall number three somewhere? Storage. Yeah, I agree. And last but not least, we have wall number four. This one is one that might have a rating and is acoustically separated. Should we be using those at the last two locations?
Stairs, definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, so stairs and probably want to put it here because they did say acoustical separation here in our question. Perfect.
I would I would push back a little bit saying that the storage room could be a number two. This is where experience kind of comes in and can hurt you. I have done plenty in office spaces that we've just taken a partition up to an existing drop ceiling. And and tied it off to the the ceiling. Done number one for cost reasons. And number two, because there was no rating really required. So the storage copy room must include copy machine or space and office supplies. That doesn't say anything about sound or fire rating or anything. So one could say that that storage room is is a number two.
That's a good point. I think it's also easy to fall into a trap because they don't build the wall like this. The stud would extend further or it would be braced back some way walls don't just like typically stop like that.
I think what they're indicating here though is that the wall, the chipboard is the solid part of the wall. Yes, it would be bracing from there up to the top as it would be on number two.
Okay, let's go and see the answer. Alright, so it looks like four at the stair, one, the partial height wall at the reception, four at the conference room, and then they're calling out for three at the storage. And the the rationale they give this image adapted from architectural graphics standards includes a variety of conditions for which different wall types are required. As described in Time Saver Standards for Architectural Design Technical Data for Professional Practice, which I have never read in my life. Fixed rail high walls are appropriate for an open reception desk that requires both vision and sound communication. Framed walls that extend above the ceiling are appropriate where some sound attenuation from equipment such as a copied machine is desired. And partitions that extend from the structure to structure are needed where a fire rating or complete sound attenuation are required such as egress locations and conference rooms. Wall type two is not used because none of the walls shown are appropriate to stop at the ceiling. But like Paul said, this might also be appropriate. I think they're nitpicking a lot here.
And that will trip you up. And I don't have any good advice for that. The only advice I would have is that the exam is geared towards the books. Read the books, take the exam based on answers from the books.
Yeah, I mean, there's a I need to research a book because there was this one probably a little bit talks about the acoustics part of it. So there was a few acoustics problems that there wasn't necessarily a book that I read for about the acoustics. But one of those things that highlighted that I saw was I I mean, I do agree that number two for the stores we we've used a lot. But it did talk about a copy is also used as a copy copy room. So there's things like, you know, you don't want to hear the sound. Or, you know, there's some heat gain because of the copy machine too, so. It was definitely one of those kind of tricky ones, but I didn't need to go for my studies and look more into like figure out some sort of acoustic books and the rationale.
And then Tyler, did you have any comments or questions?
I guess it's kind of
Oh, you're really quiet Tyler. You're like kind of getting loud and then quiet again. Are you like a little bit far away from your microphone? Now you're completely quiet if you're talking. Okay. Well, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Oh, hi.
I had to put my headphones back in. I think, you know, they're alluding to the copiers, some sort of sound difference, not that it makes sense to your point, Paul, but I guess that's what the answer is saying, right?
Yeah, that's the way that I the way that my experience has taught me is that if you take the partition through the the ceiling, they'll put insulation on both sides of the ceiling. And the sound has to go up through the insulation, hop over the wall and come back down through the insulation. So that makes it a tougher path. If the partition goes up just to the underside of the ceiling and you put insulation on both sides, the insulation can go up or the sound could go up through the insulation, come back down through the insulation. There's not another barrier between one side of the wall to the other side of the wall that's six inches high. That stops the sound. So three is a better sound barrier wall, but two is is adequate in my opinion for the for the case in in storage, but that's my experience, my understanding of things and my when I go to a client, I'm gonna say two is fine for sound attenuation of a copier versus, you know, being out in the in the corridor. You're not going to hear the noise. And so that's bringing way too much into it. You know, I just wanted to mention that is kind of the pitfall. When you look at these questions and you don't have Darian guiding you through this and you're coming up with your own guide through this. These experiential things will come through your mind. You have to really kind of block those out and just focus on which of these is really the book answer, the best book answer.
What's kind of funny is I I did all these before this and like went through it without looking at the answers first, just to test and refresh myself. And I got this answer, but I actually came up with number three because I was imagining that this is a drop ceiling. And you want the drop ceiling grid to stop here and you want a nice way to do that. And because this appears to be a very public portion of the office, it probably has a hard ceiling. Because I looked at those, I was like, well, you could technically use either, but you want your to have a nice termination for what's likely an acoustical ceiling in a storage room versus maybe a hard ceiling or maybe a nice acoustical ceiling with the integral tiles in the public space. Which is again, way too much information than you needed to think about to answer this and actually had nothing to do with their actual rationale. You just got to make sure that you're not letting yourself snowball too far. But as long as you arrive at the correct answer, who cares?
Yeah.
Alright. I think we're we're doing pretty good on time. We've got two more sections left and the questions associated with those. I think we're we're on track to finish. But if any, remember, if anyone comes up with any questions or has anything that they would want to talk about further, stop us and and let us know. The next section is project in, oh, I'm terrible typing, guys. Project integration of program and systems. In this section, you'll pull together all the decisions from the previous three sections regarding environmental conditions, code systems and assemblies. This is the largest section of the PPD division. So objective four point one, determine building configuration. Objective four point two, integrate building systems into the project. Objective four point three, integrate program requirements into the project. And objective four point four, integrate environmental and contextual conditions into the project design. So I I really used black spectacles to study for PPD and PDD after I failed them back to back. And if you are looking at those lectures or or even reading into the PPI Kaplan-Brightwood Ballast books, whatever you have available on hand. A lot of the information that you covered in the previous sections is represented here. This, like it says, it's a kind of taking that information and showing how it applies and relates to each other. I think this is where it starts to get really tricky because kind of how we talked about in the last question, this is when you start to see a lot of considerations for one answer. And it's really important just to make sure you understand what the question is asking. Pull the necessary information, stay focused and try to ignore that this might not be how you would approach it in real life. And I think that's really the tricky part for this section in particular. Okay, so our first sample item. The plan below shows a new community center plan for an existing apartment complex. The community center will include four main program areas with following requirements. A leasing office, which needs to be near the main entrance, a multipurpose room, which needs to be near the pool deck, an exercise room, which needs to be near the lockers and restroom, the restroom and lockers, which need to be near the pool deck. Each program will occupy one quadrant of the building. Click in the quadrant that is the most suitable location for the exercise room. Okay, so we've got a lot of considerations here. We are looking for the exercise room, which needs to be near the restrooms and locker rooms. So one of the adjacent needs to be restroom locker. Do we have anything else that relates to the exercise room? No, we don't. But we do have a note that says the restrooms and locker rooms need to be near the pool deck. So it looks like this is our pools. Okay, so we know that those need to be probably in one of these two spaces. We also know that the multipurpose room needs to be near the pool deck too. So one of these is going to be our multipurpose and one is going to be our restrooms. Does anyone have an opinion about what we should do next?
The you've got all three figured out then. If the leasing office has to be the by the office, then all these are accounted for. Which would leave the remaining one to be the exercise room.
Yeah. So if this is our exercise room, let's do this all the way just for fun. So releasing office near the main entrance. So we know that our restroom and our multipurpose need to be right here. So that way we can establish that this is our leasing office. And then we know that our exercise room needs to be near our restroom and there's only one block where they could both be next to each other if this is where the leasing office is. So that's when we can put our restroom here, our multipurpose room here, and then verify that this is our exercise room. Does that make sense? Cool. So erase all that so we can see it. So rationale, by reviewing the site plan, you can see the locations of the main entrance and the pool deck. Based on their locations, you can determine the entrance, the various program spaces listed requirements. The multipurpose room and the restroom locker rooms must both be on the west side of the building. The leasing office goes into the southeast corner of the building in order to be near the main entrance. This leaves the northeast quadrant of the exercise for the exercise room location. And these questions are awesome because you don't need to study anything to get this correct. If you ever see a programmatic question like this, where it's asking you how to site or program the building. Generally, all of the, I'm not going to say always, but generally all of the information you need to solve this is in the prompts. And that's when you need to like laser focus on just the information they've given you. I think this example was really easy compared to the ones they have on the real exams, to be honest. I think you're likely to see something that looks alike, a lot like this, but with more considerations, more spaces. It's not going to be a nice four square building on the actual exam. But this does show you the the kind of logic and and process that that they want you to go through to answer some of these. And try to go into it with a a clear mind and not put in your own professional opinion or past experience into these. All the information that you need to answer them is typically in in the question itself. Moving right along, we have another sketch. Refer to the exhibit. The client for this partial office renovation has requested a new studio to be used for the video broadcast. Due to the existing conditions, the studio must be located in the adjacent to the existing HVAC closet, server room and mailroom. Which of the following should the architect recommend to be best minimized outside noise within the studio to best minimize outside noise within the studio? A, fabric wall panels in the studio and on the shared walls between the HVAC closet, server room and mailroom. Next, internally aligned HVAC ducts with sound absorptive absorptive material. Insulated double stud partition walls between the studio and the other rooms extending to the structural deck above. Insulated shaft walls between the studio and other rooms extending to the structural deck above. Does anyone have one they want to cross out right away?
Shaft walls. You can cross these shaft walls because we can do the wall from two sides.
Exactly right. You probably wouldn't need a shaft wall. Any others you guys think we can cross out right away?
The internally lined ducts in the HVAC system since it's existing already.
Perfect. Okay, that leaves two fabric wall panels in the studio and the shared walls between the HVAC closet. So that's this guy, server room and mail room. Or insulating double stud partition walls between the studio and other rooms extending to the structural deck above. So I think what gives me pause at this one is it's fabric wall panels in the studio and on the shared walls between the HVAC closet, server room and mail room. That sounds like great in my head because when you think about these studios, they always have like the fabric wall panels everywhere, right? Like when you see them on TV or on YouTube, if you're like me. But it says the server room and the server room barely touches the studio. So that kind of gives me pause and then we also have insulated double stud partition walls between the studio and the other rooms extending to the structural deck above. So we know that fabric wall panels will help sound performance. We also know that insulated double stud partition walls will help sound performance. And if you've ever done hospitality design, you know that the best way to separate sound, separate uses acoustically is actually by providing airspace in between two stud walls. That's really what bumps up your STC is when you have that air gap in between two studs. Make sure your studs are staggered so there's no way that they can vibrate against each other if you're using metal studs. That's one of the the best ways to increase your sound performance. So honestly, I think this question is super tricky because either answer could be correct.
I think it makes sense though that it's the third one because you're trying to keep sound from the outside coming in rather than absorbing sound in the room itself, which is the function of a wall panel. Like the wall panels indicate that it's internally trying to control the sound, not externally.
I agree with you. And when we go to the next slide, we can see that that is exactly correct. And this rationale, based on plumbing, electricity, acoustics, sustainable design methods for architecture. I haven't read this book personally, but I think Justin, you were talking about a book that covers acoustics. This might be one to look up. Has anyone actually read this? Or seen it? No, neither. I don't know, might be worth looking into. I don't think this is one that we own in Cincinnati yet. But I'll double check to see if we have any acoustic books in our library that might be of help. Sound absorbing materials help reduce noise within a room. However, when noise comes from outside a particular room, the sound transmission into that room must be reduced. An insulated double stud wall minimizes sounds transmission in two ways. First, separation between the studs provides an acoustic break from one side of the wall to the other. Second, the insulation absorbs sound within the cavity of the wall cavity. Extending the wall to the structural deck above will prevent the sound from transmitting over the top of the wall. While the fabric wall panels and duct lining will help with acoustical issues, they would not be the best choice in this situation. Shaft walls are not appropriate for a floor to ceiling wall type. So. Just like Tyler said. The noise is come from outside a particular room. The sounds transmission must be reduced and the insulated double stud walls are a more appropriate way to do that than the fabric wall panels. I think the fabric wall panels was kind of meant to be a red herring in this because you might see that and immediately think, oh yeah. That's what studios use and that's how they get you. Anyone have any questions on this guy? Okay. We'll move right along to our next question. Which of the following tree arrangements is best suited for optimal solar energy utilization? And control for a house within the northeast region of the United States. Evergreens on the east and south, deciduous on the west. Evergreens on the west and north, deciduous on the south. Evergreens on the west and north, no trees on the south and evergreens on the north and south, deciduous on the east and west. And this is a fun fact, every single question within the area assumes you are located in the United States. Based on being in the northern hemisphere. That can be really tricky for some people who studied school outside of the US. Or are a licensed foreign professional. You see, any question you see is what I'm saying. It will be based on if you were in the US like in Ohio. And that really trips some people up because they don't make that super clear in the guidelines anywhere. I think they like write a tiny little blurb at the end about it, but it's super important to remember as you're going through this. They'll never actually throw a situation at you where it says like pretend you were in the southern hemisphere. They won't do that. They will always assume you are in the northern hemisphere in the US. Okay, so this is something that I do not excel at. So which of the following tree arrangements is best suited for solar energy in a house? So we're in the northeast region of the US. So thinking about, I don't know, I'm gonna put myself in upstate New York. I'm imagining I'm there. And we know upstate New York is can be kind of cold in the summer, might be kind of toasty in the summer. Maybe we want to capture light in the winter, but not in the summer. Does anyone see any that we should cross out right away?
Top one.
Evergreens on the east and south. I agree with you. Anyone has a second one that they wanna cross out?
The bottom one with the evergreens north and south.
Okay, someone wanna pick the right answer?
Third one.
Third one?
Oh wait, no, maybe the second one.
And then the south, the city is on, yeah.
So.
The second one.
The second one, okay. Yeah, I agree with you. So moving to our next slide, second one's exactly correct. And. That's because even in the northeast US, typically, they do want some trees on the south to block the heat gain from it in the summer. Deciduous is perfect because it does give you the ability to block the. A really hot southern sun in the summer, but in the winter, it'll allow you to absorb the heat from that sun. There won't be leaves on the trees to block it. So the rationale, site planning and design handbook, this book is really helpful, actually, I have a copy and there's too much information in it. But it is nice to read. Describe strategies for using trees to improve a building's energy efficiency. Since the site is in the northeast region of the US, evergreen trees to the north and west will help to block the winter winds as well as heat. Gain from the western sunlight in the summer. Deciduous trees to the south allow the winter sun when it's desirable for passive heat gain, but block the summer sun providing valuable shade. Sweet. Any questions before we move on to our last section?
Yeah, I do. Whoever mentioned the third one, what was it about the third question that made you say that first? Like what did you read in it?
Uh, the. I guess I was thinking optimal solar energy, so you would want to gain sunlight from the south. During the summer, but. It's, I guess it's not saying you're collecting solar energy, it's just saying use of solar of energy.
Yeah.
But in theory, the deciduous trees would help reduce your solar load. Your energy load. I get that. I was thinking of harvesting energy rather than energy usage.
Yeah, okay, good. So as long as you're recognizing. That there are things in there that will trip you up. Yeah, so it says optimal solar energy and control for a house. And I would agree with you that if you're just out to to collect the solar energy that you would want the. A mass wall or something on the south wall, you would want. Daylight and and so on to come in and warm up the space, but. Yeah, this was. Utilization and control. So that's. My understanding of what deciduous. Brings into the the. Answer here, so. Good. Thanks for being vulnerable.
I know test taking strategy I have is always look for prepositions in questions. So and or nor that sort of thing. Because I I have issues with ignoring those when I'm in a rush. And highlighting the propositions really helps me to. See things like that, not gloss over them and answer the wrong question. Yay, exams. Okay, I think we're doing really great on time. So our last section of this exam is project cost and budgeting. Remember going back to one of the first slides, this is the. The section has the smallest amount of questions percentage on the exam. So this area isn't going to be as present throughout the exam. If you are in a bind where you maybe don't have enough time to study, spend more time focusing on section three, the integration of systems. Then project cost and budgeting. Make sure that you're spending the most of your study times towards where the most of the questions are. But still take time to read through and understand this to the the best of your ability, of course. So in this last section, you'll consider the bottom line, how much does this project cost? So consider this like the part of the project where the contractor pulls pricing at DD and it comes in over budget inevitably. That's what we're gonna be talking about here. Objective five point one, evaluate design alternatives based on the program. Objective five point two, perform cost evaluation. Objective five point three, evaluate cost considerations during the design process. Alright, our first sample question, we've got some maths and some fill in the blank with a typed number. Refer to the exhibit, a developer has a budget of three million one hundred thousand dollars for an office building project. The project completed, a project completed in two thousand eleven with similar site and project size had a total cost of two million seven hundred thousand dollars. The present year construction cost index in the same city is one hundred twelve point six. How much is the current project underfunded? Okay, so we have our historical cost index and we have these values to work with. So first, I think we can set this up. By a simple cross multiplication, maybe? Does anyone have any thoughts on how we should start this?
You could do. I guess like. Yeah, one twelve point six over twenty. Or two million seven hundred thousand? Or there's like a relationship between those two and the year and X. And our cost.
Yeah. Let's see. Heard to the exhibits. Oh man, I did this before and I've totally forgotten what I had to do.
So I guess you have to figure out the difference between the project that was constructed in two thousand and eleven, the one to do now. So. Yeah, sorry, just.
Oh no, you see, help me with the math. I agree and. A developer has a budget of project completed. The present, okay, so our present is one twelve dot six and. I think we need to set up a ratio. With the value from two thousand eleven. So the national average is here. And then we also have the project location. Okay. And going back to our question, it says similar site and project size. And I think that this site is key. Similar site, so I think we can ignore the national average. I think the value that this question is prompting us to look at is this ninety three dot eight. And I think this is where we need to set up our cross multiplication. So if we take one twelve dot six. And. Over X equals. Ninety three dot eight. Over. Two seven zero zero. And I think that would get us there. I don't know, let's try it out. I might be wrong here. But never hurts to try. And then. We would divide that by ninety three dot eight. To get this cost of. Three million two hundred forty one thousand one hundred fifty one dollars. So that would be the equitable cost if we are matching the. The cost index to the actual budget for this two thousand eleven project. And it's asking us how much the current project is underfunded. So they have a budget of three million one hundred thousand dollars. And the number we got is higher than that, which tells us we're on the right track at least. If we got a number that was lower than what the developer had budgeted, then we would know we've done something wrong, we need to reevaluate. But the number we have is higher, it seems like a reasonable number. So maybe we subtract. This guy. From the number we got. And we got one hundred and forty one thousand one hundred fifty one dollars under budget. Okay. I don't know. Does everyone think that was the right way to approach this? What do you think, Paul?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. So what's really funny is. I know that this answer is wrong because I have the answer pulled up right now and I'm interested to figure out why. So I got a hundred and forty one thousand one hundred fifty one and they got a hundred and forty thousand. Which seems really close to me. And I disagree with how they did it. And I'm.
It's rounding there.
Yeah, well, I'm interested if anyone has thoughts because. I, that's how I would do it is I would do the cross multiplication just like that. So it says first you'll need to calculate the ratio between the cost indices by dividing the present year cost indices by the historic cost indices. That ratio multiplied by the historic construction cost will give you an estimate for the current construction cost. Finally, you'll subtract the budget from the current construction cost to determine the amount of underfunding. Because the dollars in front of the answer box only numerals need to be entered. So they took, instead of cross multiplying to get an equitable ratio, what they did is they took the current cost indices. The one twelve dot six and they divided that. By the two thousand eleven one for the location, which was ninety three dot eight. To get a ratio of one point two zero zero four. And then. They multiplied the. Construction cost of the older two thousand eleven development by that to get an estimate. So if I take this times two seven. Okay, you get the same thing.
It's rounding here.
Yeah, why did they round it?
Because the rounding is just. Makes it simpler. You normally don't take things out past two decimal points.
That's interesting. So.
You had it the right way.
Yeah.
Either way.
So. When it comes to rounding. They will generally prompt you to round, unlike this question. They'll say round to the nearest something, something. And when they are determining how these questions ping correct or incorrect, they always provide fluff for it for rounding. Differences, so. Even though it says the answer is one hundred forty thousand dollars, it might have read my answer correct. The one forty one thousand to change because it didn't specify rounding number. Anytime they have a question like this, there's typically a range of correct answers established to account for those slight rounding differences. It's again, it's one of those situations where the worst thing you can do is worry about it, type your answer and move on. Or again, if you found this question on the exam and you were like, I don't know what's happening. Just type something in, move to the next question, flag it for review, come back to it if you have time. Spend your time on the question so you know you can get right. Because this question is not weighted more than the one we answered about the tree shading in less than a minute or two. Yeah. So does anyone have any questions about this one or or what to do when you're encountering a problem like this? Okay, sometimes all I can say is good luck, try your best. Questions are tricky. Alright, this will be our last question for today. Sample items well, the mechanical engineer has proposed two different HVAC systems for a new project. Either system is suitable for the project type and location, but for tax purposes, the owner prefers. A higher HVAC equipment depreciation cost over the life cycle of the system. Which is hilarious. System A is a forced air heating and cooling system with an upfront cost of ten K. And anticipated useful life of twenty years and a salvage value of one thousand dollars. System B is an electric package terminal unit with an upfront cost of seven thousand five hundred dollars. With an anticipated useful life of fifteen years and a salvage value of one thousand five hundred dollars. What is the annual depreciation of the system with the higher year, higher per year depreciation? Oh boy.
The F cares. Sorry.
I think if you're trying this hard to save a buck on your taxes, you have bigger problems with your business plan. And you should be spending more time on that and less time on calculating the depreciation of your system. Okay, so. Does anyone have an idea about what we should do as the first step here?
You gotta determine. Lifetime costs.
No, system A and system B.
Okay, so we got two of them. And. I think the. I think the lifetime cost.
Yeah, I guess we don't have enough information for that, do we?
Yeah, it's not telling you what the like upkeep on it would be.
Yeah.
I think. I think let's focus on the depreciation.
The nine thousand over twenty years.
Yeah, so uh you got nine thousand over twenty by taking the
The savage value back, yeah.
Yeah, that's one thousand.
So we got that nine thousand. And that's over twenty years.
That was four fifty.
Four hundred fifty average, okay, and then system B.
Seventy-five hundred. Fifteen hundred.
Should be three hundred.
That equals four hundred per year. Okay, so now we know that A is depreciating four hundred fifty per year and B is depreciating four hundred per year. And let's go back to our question, what is the annual depreciation of the system with the higher per year? So that leads us to this guy. So they didn't ask us, but that's system A. We're gonna write off fifty extra dollars a year compared to uh system B, everyone. That's gonna save us uh, let's see if you're in a twenty percent tax bracket. Twenty percent of fifty dollars, it's gonna save you ten dollars a year. And again, if this is a crucial part of your business, you need a better business. But that is exactly correct. Uh rationale, they're describing exactly what we just did. Uh, except they have a different take on how important annual depreciation is than I do. Uh, they consider it an important aspect of life cycle considerations. It can be determined by subtracting salvage value from the initial investment, that's the ten K minus one K per system A. Seven uh, the seven point five K minus one point five K per system B. Uh, and then dividing the estimated lifespan of the system, twenty years for A, fifteen years for B, to get the two average annual depreciation, and we selected the higher, which was four fifty. And that is the last question I have before we talk a little bit about AI Cincinnati's resources. Did anyone have any questions that came up? Okay, well, we'll talk about this briefly then.
Before you, before you do, let me just pop in my two cents word. So the project planning and design, the PPD, the focus of it is about application and understanding. The other um section, project development and documentation, is about understanding and application. I think that if I were studying for this and I knew this uh going into it, I would study both, I would read through both books and understand the differences between the two between the two exams. And that additional level of layer of understanding or or context will help you answer the questions for PPD. And then go back and answer the questions for PDD. So uh these two books kind of work together, just like PP and PD. Those two books work together, project, project management and practice management work together. So when you read those two books and take those two exams, they feed off each other, these two feed off each other, so I would encourage you to read through both materials, take exams out of both materials to understand a better context when you're taking the exam here.
Yeah, or or just do it like me and fail them both back to back, so you inadvertently study for both, even if you didn't plan to, that works too.
No, don't, don't, that's my strategy.
Uh, yeah, to Paul's point, it makes sense to getting together certain exams. The project management and practice management both have a lot of overlap. They both draw in the architect's handbook of professional practice a ton, they both also utilize the contracts. Construction evaluation a lot of times actually gets grouped into those as well, because it is also contract-based. Those are the three that utilize the AIA standard form of agreement contracts. PA, PPD, and PDD also sometimes get grouped together. Because they all are based more around architectural situations. There's less math in them, they aren't drawing heavily from the contracts. The most overlap is present between PPD and PDD, I would say, out of any exam, even more so than the practice management and pro- project management exams. It's definitely good to to study for both of them before taking one exam if you have the time and availability.
Has anyone, or did anyone like do both at the same time? Like study for eight weeks and then take the test back to back, cuz I've read some tactics about that. And I'm debating whether I should do that, usually I've been doing about four weeks of study and then just take the exam I'm studying for. But I would love to hear others' opinions about that.
I didn't
You've got an individual, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
You've got an individual that took all seven exams in one week and let the pass fails fall where they may, and then I had to go back and just pick up the ones that I failed.
And then I schedule, so this was, uh, I was in a it was in twenty nineteen and I was training for the half marathon and also trying to pass PPD and PDD. I had given myself uh four weeks for every other exam, one month of studying roughly, except a lot of times I cut it shorter. So I was trying to split my time between studying for PPD and PDD along with training for the half. And one month was not long enough, I was trying to watch all of the Black Spectacles videos uh and take the practice exams, and I didn't get close to making it through them all. I tried to read the book at the last minute, the the old Brightwood book, and I I didn't make it through it. And so I I had a month of studying for PPD, I failed it, I studied another month for PDD and failed it. And then I scheduled them as soon as I could, so sixty days out to take PPD then again, and sixty days out from my last fail to take PDD and was able to pass them. That was after I actually did manage to watch every single Black Spectacles lecture, and I took really extensive notes, which was something I wasn't doing before and I needed to do for these exams, just to I was able to cram more for the other exams, but these two with the breadth of content notes were important. I would really recommend you give yourself a little bit more than a month just because there's so much content. A month was not enough for me, like I thought it was going to be. Even sticking to a study schedule, I would at least give yourself six weeks instead of four, just for for these two. I've known people or talked to people who studied for both at the same time and then tested and and were able to pass. The blanket advice I usually give to people who ask on Black Spectacles, a lot of times people ask it on the Black Spectacles ARI five point O community, uh which is like the one for Ncarp, it's a free message board. I I usually tell them, spend an entire month studying for both, like an overview of both exams. Then spend a month just focusing on PPD, then take the PPD exam, then spend a month just focusing on PDD, then take the PDD exam. If I could go back and do it again, that's what I would do, but everyone's study strategy is different and you just gotta find what works for you. The only thing that makes me nervous about the idea of studying for both and then testing back to back in the same week is there's already so much content just for PPD alone. Doubling the amount of content that you have to have ready in your memory uh might be challenging because there already is just so much, so. I usually say for both PJM and PCM as well as PPD and PDD, if you have the time and the availability to spend a month doing both, uh then really dig into one exam test, then dig into the next exam and test. But I know it's worked for people. And so again, uh if you have the slides, you can click this link, I also just reposted in the chat. These are the list of resources, links to all the online ones, as well as a list of which are available in the AIA Cincinnati library. So we have our own internal library where you can message us and we will check out, let you check out some of the physical books we have. Some of these are also available in the Cincinnati Public Library. If you have a library card, you can also check out a lot of ebooks through the Cincinnati's library, it's a great resource. So always check there too, uh or talk to your friends, a lot of people have copies of these books floating around, they're not using. People in your office who are done testing, or you might be able to find some of these just floating around your office, people generally don't care if you take them. If you have, uh and if your office has an ICC membership, you can, depending on which like kind you have, you can get access to the code commentary, which is a huge help for PPD and PDD, sometimes if there's something in particular that's tripping you up, it's also a great resource just for practice. We are going to meet next month to cover PDD. We had scheduled PJM, but no one registered, and we had the same situation with programming and analysis. So we're gonna reschedule those for the fall if we get interest. If you found this helpful, tell your friends, tell them to join. And if there isn't interest, we 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 just won't reschedule those, I suppose. But it sounds like there's a lot of people who are interested in more workshops centered around PPD and PDD in particular. If that's the case, we love feedback, if there's anything you wanna hear more about or really dig into, maybe it's just a particular subject of PPD, like digging into those systems. Feel free to send an email to to Julie or info at AIA dot com. Any feedback is appreciated and we'll do our best to to schedule more content that we think you guys will find helpful. Last chance, any questions or comments before we call it a day and let everyone enjoy their Memorial Day weekend? Yep, okay.
Yeah, it was really helpful, I appreciate you guys' time working on this one. Helping us.
No worries, thanks for hanging out with us today, guys, and hope you all have a great long weekend.